This is Troy, your host. We are live and recording.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. Thank you so much for joining us today for our afternoon business meeting. Before I do call the meeting to order, I wanted to acknowledge Commissioner Teal, who has an excused absence. He's reminded us he's double, if not triple booked today. So it's that time of year, so we will thank him in his absence and move forward with Commissioner Thomas and myself. And before we get going, we do have a bit of a ceremonial thing that we would like to do today. We have some honored members of our law enforcement community, from the District Attorney's Office, our Youth Commission, and several partners, including from one of our key nonprofits, around the successful passage of House Bill 241371, which increases opportunities for criminal background checks of massage parlors, which we know have been a hotbed for human trafficking for many years. This is a special moment for us because many may not know that county commissioners are very active in the legislative process on an annual basis. We're thankful and honored to have Commissioner Thomas represent us at Colorado Counties Incorporated as the secretary, and through that organization, they often ask counties if we have pieces of legislation that they would like, the counties would like to run. For us, moving forward with legislation that increases the opportunity to catch bad guys in the human trafficking realm was a priority for us. We brought that to CCI. CCI unanimously supported it, or at least voted as a body to support it. We then had metro area county commissioners and several other organizations throughout the state in a bipartisan way support this legislation. Just last week, after having gone through the House and the Senate, lots of stakeholding, the governor signed it into law. And that would not have been possible without each of our amazing partners. And again, we're very thankful for the sheriff's office, the district attorney, our internal county staff, Casey, who's here with us, I hope you'll be up for the photo, who's worked really hard on fine tuning the language associated with that bill. More to come. A notable absence among us is Janelle Goodrich, from a critical nonprofit called From Silence to Saved. Janelle really doesn't get paid anything, and has even taken in a young person that was trafficked and has now adopted that little girl into her family. She has been working very diligently in this realm on human trafficking, and I know this also would not have been possible without her testimony and the involvement of From Silence to Save, so we really appreciate that nonprofit. And more to come this next legislative session. We're already, I know it seems like it's summer, but as commissioners and legislators, we're already talking about bills that we may be bringing forward to expand the scope of this great work that we are all doing as a community. So again, thank you for that, and I'd like to invite forward all of our partners to take a photograph to commemorate the passage of House Bill 241371.
So hanging out in mingle, the ink is so fresh on the governor's signature that it's literally coming down hot from the presses upstairs. The amazing one, yeah. Thank you. With the actual bill. Here it is. Is this a signed bill? Who wants a copy of this? Well, oh, it's not.
And I want to especially acknowledge two youth members of our Youth Commission. Marcia, I don't know if you wanted to introduce our special guest, but we have recently formed our Douglas County Youth Commission and are always pleased to have them engaged with us.
So excited to present Marcia Alston with staff, two members of our Douglas County newly-formed Youth Commission. They have been commissioners for about 10 months right now, and they are phenomenal. I'd like for them to come up and introduce themselves, in what school and what grade.
Great.
Hi, my name is Catherine Moore. I go to Thunder Ridge, and I'm becoming a junior this year.
Thank you, Commissioner. You're a commissioner just like us.
I'm Lilian Hicks. I just graduated Colorado Early Colleges here in Castle Rock, and I'll be headed to the University of Utah in the fall.
Congratulations. Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate you both for being here, and thank you for your leadership.
Thank you so much. Thank you for having us.
Absolutely. So before we get going, we're also honored, always honored, to have Pastor Jason Vandevere here with us to provide our invocation. Pastor?
Father, we just come before you this afternoon, and we thank you for the benefit, the privilege. Lord of cities, nations, government, Lord, we know that it exists for our benefit. Lord, that your power is placed among men, not for the sake of ruling, but for the sake of serving. And so, Lord, as we come here this afternoon, we just pray that you would be here. We pray for our leaders as we're encouraged. Lord, we know how much they need prayer, both those that know you, serve you, Lord, for their strength, for their protection, for wisdom. Those that don't, Lord, that you would work in their lives to draw them to your Son. Father, that you would just work in these proceedings here, that you would guide the agenda, that you would provide wisdom and direction in everything that happens here and all that supports it, with the staff and with our government. Lord, we pray that you would work in these days in our nation. Lord, that you would raise up more and more godly leaders to serve for the benefit of your people, that you would draw many to yourself. Lord, that you would just continue to work and pour out your mercy and your grace, and it's in Jesus's name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor. So with that, I'll call the meeting to order. If you'll all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Attorney Garcia, do we have certification of today's agenda?
You do, sir. The county attorney's office has reviewed all items on the agenda, and you have appropriate jurisdiction over these matters.
Thank you. And do any commissioners have disclosures for items on this agenda today?
I have none.
And I have none either. So with that, we'll move on to item two of our business meeting, which is our consent agenda. Let me first ask if there is any citizen comment with regard to any item on our consent agenda. Okay, seeing none in the room. Troy, do we have any comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, and with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
I do have a comment. I read the minutes. I think the minutes are taken for a reason by Haley, and they're really important because maybe next week, next month, next year, five years from now, somebody might want to go back and read these minutes to see what happens. And in the minutes from May 14th, all four citizens who spoke have their last names spelled incorrectly, and it's not Haley's fault. I would just like to remind the chair that we need to make sure we ask people to spell their name so that we get the information right. And I'll give this to Haley so she has the opportunity to correct the minutes, but I just think it's really important that we get this information, and that the chair from now on asks people specifically to spell their name so the information is correct in the records. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas, and we will pass that on to our chair, Commissioner Teal, honored to serve in his absence as our vice chair. Anything additional with regard to the consent?
I have nothing else.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I have a motion to approve the requests in all items A through AG of the consent agenda.
And I'll second that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that passes 2-0. With that, we'll move on to our regular agenda item. Item 3A is a motion around the First Amendment to the Executed Intergovernmental Agreement between the City of Lone Tree and the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas, State of Colorado, regarding a financial contribution for the C-470 Trail Connector to RTD Park Meadows LRT project for an additional amount of $500,000 associated with Douglas County Project Number CI 2021-035. Art Griffith presenting for staff. Hi, Art.
Thank you very much, Art Griffith for engineering. So over 10 years ago, I started to pursue this project with Pam Kelly with Park Meadows Mall. So I know that she's retired from Park Meadows, serving there, but this is an important project to help improve multimodal connections from the C-470 Trail to both RTD's light rail station as well as to the mall. And that's a big economic engine that helps fund our capital improvement projects, so I'm glad to see this finally moving forward. The project was selected through Dr. Cog and CDOT's Safer Main Street Grant Program to receive 1.6 million. 400,000 contribution is included for this project from the Southeast Public Improvement Metropolitan District, SPIMED. The bids were approximately a million higher than anticipated when we submitted the project. Actually, Lone Tree submitted the project that we sponsored financially in that application back in '21. The project's low bid was $3.5 million. And pending approval of this amendment, the City of Lone Tree anticipates awarding the construction contract later this month. So I'd be glad to answer any questions about this partnering, continued partnering opportunity.
Great, Art. Thank you very much. Any questions for Art?
I have none.
And I have none either. With that, we'll open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any, and Art, is there anybody here from the City of Lone Tree that wanted to?
No.
Okay.
We talked on the way here, and I didn't think they needed to be here, but they're very supportive.
Okay. Great, fantastic. Any citizen comment with regard to this item 3A? Okay, seeing none. Are there any citizen comments online?
Thank you, sir. I have no online comment.
Okay, and with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
I have a motion to approve the First Amendment to the Executed Intergovernmental Agreement between the City of Lone Tree and the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas, State of Colorado, regarding a financial contribution for the C-470 Trail Connector to RTD/Park Meadows L, I think it's Light Rail, LRT project for an additional amount of $500,000 associated with Douglas County Project File CI 2021-035. You're right, Art, it was a long time ago.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas, and I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? You know, I'll just say a tremendous note of thanks to both our staff and the City of Lone Tree. This is a great partnership, and also my district. I know that many of my residents really appreciate the trail connections and the increased opportunities for mobility across a wide variety of vehicles, so we really are grateful for this opportunity to partner and are looking forward to more to come. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that carries 2-0. With that, we'll move on. Thank you, Art. We'll move on to item 3B, which is an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Castle Pines and the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas, State of Colorado, regarding a financial contribution for an amount not to exceed $1,100,000 for the design of the Happy Canyon Road/ I-25 Interchange Project and approval of the associated budget reallocations, Douglas County Project Number CI 2012-011. Once again, Art?
Thank you, commissioners. So I'm not sure if I'm a dinosaur, a dinosaur, or if I have a lot of fortitude, but this project started in 2012, so we continue to try to advance opportunities to improve the Happy Canyon interchange. In the recent years, the City of Lone Tree has taken the lead in advancing additional traffic studies associated with development within the city. And last year, we submitted an application jointly. Lone Tree actually, excuse me, Castle Pines actually submitted the application, but we were a strong supporter of the project. We submitted that to the Denver Regional Council of Governments through the Dr. Cog tip project selection process, and this project was selected to receive $2.6 million in a surface transportation block grant, federal funds to advance the design, preconstruction activities, which includes environmental clearances, additional studies, and preliminary and final design. This IGA is a funding contribution of $1.1 million from Douglas County. That represents about 23% of the cost. Approximately $4.2 million is associated with hiring a consultant's team to advance the project. The current project is estimated to be 34 to 40 million. That's a pretty big gap, but the additional money range is associated if CDOT will advance the bridge replacement of the existing structure, at the same time, we widen and add a new structure to the north. In order to advance this IGA and our contribution, we need two budget reallocations associated with this motion, and the first is to transfer $600,000 from the State Highway 83 Safety Improvement Projects. In summer of 2023, we fulfilled our financial obligation with CDOT and partnering with them to advance improvements on State Highway 83 or Parker Road. Most of those improvements are focused north of Franktown to Bayou Gulch Road, so those funds are available to be transferred to other needs. The other is to transfer $205,000 from the Meridian Intersection Improvement Projects, and we are able to transfer those funds since those intersection improvements were recently completed. So before you is the motion that includes those budget reallocations.
Okay, thank you, Art. Anything from the City of Castle Pines?
I believe that this IGA goes to their board tonight as well, and they'll be moving forward with implementing the design here within the next two months.
Okay, thank you, Art. Any questions for staff?
I have none.
You know, I was told there'd be no math today, but I did some anyway, Art. And so I heard you say that the $1.1 million is for the design, and that's 23% of the total cost of design?
That's 23% of the estimated $4.8 million, of which $4.2 million is for the consultant services. The remaining part of our contribution would go towards right-of-way acquisitions, utility relocations, subsurface utility investigations, and some other, what I call, preconstruction activities.
Okay. Yeah, I had $4,782,000. So I'm wondering, for those we represent in the community that might say, wow, that's a lot of money for consultancy and design, how would you respond?
There's a lot involved in getting all the approvals with all the interchange. You have to advance several alternatives, screen them down. The alternatives are fairly well screened there. You are involved with a lot of public meetings moving forward. Environmental looks at a number of things, number of resources, includes noise studies to see how far you have to provide noise mitigation, let's say, not right at the interchange, but this project involves modifying the ramps to the interstate. Particularly noticeable is the southbound on-ramp, which is very short, and it will be lengthened, and it will be called what you call a parallel merge. Right now, it's a taper merge, and it's like if your vehicle is merging onto the highway and the mainline traffic is coming over that hill headed south fairly quick, so a lot of the costs aren't just at the interchange, they're improving the ramps associated. All the drainage has to be figured out. You have to get in the water quality. There's several other factors involved, and that's how we get to the $4.2 million in consultant fees.
Right. Well, I just wanted to double check on that on the record, and that might be a theme that staff and others are getting familiar to me raising. It's always, you know, about opportunity cost and what are we giving up when we're, you know, using funds for a particular endeavor? And I know we have partnership here, and this has already gone through the TIP cycle and Dr. Cog and all of the standard procedures and approvals. It just always seems like a lot, you know? Over half of the county's budget goes to traffic, and we have nearly a, what is it, a little, what is it, Commissioner Thomas, $716 million budget?
$717 million.
Yeah. Commissioner Thomas always has it perfectly, perfectly right. I appreciate that. So I guess that's one of the challenges, is are there ever ways to cut costs and reduce the outlay for traffic?
Yeah, so this is a not-to-exceed contract.
Right.
With the consultant and the City of Castle Pines.
Yeah.
Our contribution on this project is fixed.
Yeah.
Sometimes, if we had a larger percent, we would have a pro-rata shareback if it comes in less, but we did not make that recommendation as part of this. You know, if the project costs 40 million, this represents about 10% of the construction cost, of which maybe 2% to 3% is environmental, getting through all the environmental hoops, if you will. So 8% is related to all the various design survey, underground surveying for the utilities, and some money set aside for some additional right-of-way, and that's, so if you factor that out, the engineering for the preliminary and final designs, probably around 6% or 7%. So that seems reasonable and consistent, that percentage throughout the years, you know, in that range.
Okay. Thank you, Art. Any other questions for staff?
I have none. Thank you.
Okay. So with that, let me open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment with regard to this item 3B? Yes, ma'am? And if you want to state your name and spell it for the record, we would appreciate it.
Jill Campbell, Highlands Ranch. I'm a citizen. I moved in in August 16th of 2021. I'm kind of confused because I'm kind of out of the scene for about eight months, but the construction progress we talked before was on Lincoln. This is totally different, Hilltop, right? Near, more south, correct? I have the map up, and I'm just wondering, the utility of that, is it, does the same kind of affect, I mean, $4 million, as I already said, 400 million, I mean, is that correct, this project? Yes?
So best thing to do would be to provide comment, and then we'll have staff respond.
Okay, so I'm just, that is a lot of money, but I'm wondering who this serves, and my question is, you know, like I said, I'm out of it, and I'm just kind of commenting more, like, there's 39, or something like 39 projects, four completed in last year, lots of needs, bridges and things like that. I'm just questioning, how much, how do we allocate each county? And when I'm looking at construction in Highlands Ranch, adding another lane, and all these things, that is a lot of money for 771 budget for 400. Just my comment was, what does that leave the Douglas County for the year of 2025?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Campbell. Art, did you have any response for that?
That's a pretty complicated question, but, you know, a lot of the information is online about our budgets, so you can see the monies that we set aside in the 2024 adopted budget, and all the project information is in there. You access that information through the Finance Department's folder, and you can find the budget. That includes our five-year plan as well, so there are a number of projects throughout the county, and you can see how they're being allocated this year. I can answer part of it related specifically to this question. We're contributing 23% of this effort. Unincorporated traffic utilizing this interchange currently is probably 65% to 70% of the traffic. In 2050, the unincorporated traffic, what I call the background traffic that would come from Crowfoot, Padara, up Happy Canyon, off of US 85, we calculate our contribution as we move into construction to be closer to 50% to 55%, because that's about the benefit for the unincorporated area. And of course, the incorporated citizens are also members and vote for county commissioners, and we serve them as well. But we always look at what's our partnering opportunity with these local agencies when we advance projects throughout the county, be them in Parker, Castle Rock, Lone Tree, or Highlands Ranch. So maybe that answers some of it, but I did want to encourage them, citizens, to look at our budget online, and then you can look at what those percentages are. They do fluctuate year to year. You know, one of the primary benefactors of our improvement on US 85, which is a $130 million project, we know that traffic south of Highlands Ranch Parkway represents about 33% in the 2040 plan and beyond, and the rest is representing the other traffic that comes from Highlands Ranch. So there's an example in Highlands Ranch. So there's an example of, in Highlands Ranch, an improvement that's on the west side, but has a great deal of benefit to them. That is also true with the monies that we partnered with CDOT to advance C-470, and we had a lot of operational improvements. So it varies from year to year, and these are very large projects, take several years. So if you chart it over time, which is also a document within the Transportation Folder, through our Traffic Division, you can find all of our report of what we've done in the last five years with our budget. So those tools are available.
Art, thank you for that. Any other citizen comment? Any citizen comment in the room or online with regard to this item?
Thank you, sir. I have no online comment.
Thank you, Troy. And with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
I have a motion to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Castle Pines and the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas, State of Colorado regarding a financial contribution for an amount not to exceed $1,100,000 for the design of the Happy Canyon Road/i25 interchange project and approval of the associated budget reallocations. Douglas County Project Number CI 2012-011.
And I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries 2-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Art. So with that, we will move on to item four, which is citizen comment organization comments. At this time, you are welcome to comment about any topic other than those that appeared on today's agenda. This is an opportunity to share your thoughts and ideas with us. Please state your name and where you reside prior to making comments. You'll have up to three minutes. Of course, obscenity and any comments, calling for criminal or violent action are prohibited. Commissioner comments, if any, will follow all citizen comments. Is there any public comment today? Yes, ma'am. Sir? And sir, if you want to provide something, if you want to just give it to our attorney for the record? And then if you can state your name and spell it for the record, please.
My name is Gary Weaver. I live in Franktown, Colorado. 11986 Bear Creek Drive, Franktown, 80116. My comments are pretty brief, and it has nothing to do with what was said today so far. I'm here to talk about wildlife management. I'm not an expert by any means. I served three years on the Planning Commission, though I have some experience. There's quite a lot of deer and elk down in the, let me move that here. Down south of, I'm sorry, east of Castle Rock here. And it's, people are a little concerned about that having to do with habitat and maybe the need for it. I'm glad to see that there's a lot of students in my area that are anxiously participating in things to protect the animals and making sure they're staying off the highways and so forth. The pictures you see there are, the worst one is the elk there. There's like 12 elk that congregates in one area of the place, the area of the land I'm talking about. And it's good that there's some participation. It looks like it's sustainable. I propose that high school have a class to teach the children about wildlife and wildlife management, and it would sustain some kind of program so that we might find habitat for these animals. The student resources and teacher resources are helping out right now. And recycling is mostly a common answer for this problem, I would say. What they're doing is they're doing a lot of recycling now and creating compost for the county. And if it's sustainable, it'll be a great thing for the county, and I think the participation will be maintained because it's such a good cause. The most inexpensive way, I think, to handle this would be volunteers and a class, accredited class for students. I think wildlife management is needed there. I don't think there's enough going on right now. It's probably a little bit confusing as to what to do with this, but right away, I would say we need to get something established so we can control this before it gets out of hand. I think the future is going to be in this area, so I'd like to see the youngsters participate, and I'm sure the wildlife and everybody would appreciate it. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for being with us today. Any additional citizen comment? Yes, ma'am. And we know you, Joe, but if you could just state your name and spell it again for the record, we'd appreciate it.
Jill Campbell, Highlands Ranch. I want to applaud Douglas County Commissioners. What a remarkable return this year for all you've done. I appreciate passing the Lone Tree thing, that you guys stood for what was right on that interstate and parole building that was going to be put in there right there. I think that was brilliant. That is my comment to you. Thank you so much for a great year and all your action. What incredible people you all are to work like this and facilitate laws that protect people and to comment on the wildlife. Yes, we have wildlife because the fires are sending them to where water is, I guess. I lived it on Five Points two years ago when I fed, I was in a black community, mostly black people, and hotter than you can believe on those streets by a 7-Eleven. And I got some money out in sandwiches and bananas, and by the time I pulled out, they were on my car almost. That's how hot and hungry they are. So yes, our wildlife is hungry and hot. Our temperatures are extreme, extraordinarily extreme. So when we're looking at droughtwater, I'm grateful for the fall in Colorado. That river, that filled the Colorado River was remarkably miracle. I thank God for the blessings of this good people in this community and stand for what is right. We still have unprecedented challenges, and for many, the future is not as bright as I think they hoped, and I pray to God that our faith and our Christian souls that we proclaim will be the action with our hands, hearts, and minds as we go forward in this community. Thank you, Commissioners Jake, Abe, Laura, and obviously the two, Jeff Garcia and Douglas DeBort, who has extraordinary talent in establishing law and keeping law and order, and Abe, who has remarkable dignity and leading forward, no matter the circumstance. And Laura, you as well. I applaud you for your history in this community, and I liken it sometimes to the relative point like the '80s I lived in with Reagan. We're beautiful. We can leave our soccer ball at a 7-Eleven, go to Target and buy another one and still be there. Thank God we have resources, and the time is to establish what we have. I'm grateful for this man here who has done good things in our community, and construction infrastructure is what we need to do. Build within our communities and support as we see Teton Bridge fall and all so many things crumble, and tornadoes rip through cities and no water in Chicago. Did you see that? So when we look at our future, a lot of us are on green grass. Try going where there's no green grass and no water, and where they're hungry for food and water. My soul is no longer hungry, but I see hunger. And it's when we have resources, I appreciate you allocating them responsibly in a community. We do have intellect, and people pay into what they have earned most part. Thank you, Commissioners, and Jeff and Douglas. Doug, Doug, thank you for a great year.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Any additional citizen comment? Okay, is there any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you, Troy. And with that, I'll close citizen in organization comments and move on to item five, which is commissioner comments. Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you. We've had a lot going on this year already, but I think it's important that we keep track of the citizens that we are here to serve. And today, I have some good friends here, Alexandra, who is here with her children, Gabe and Megan. They are both working on projects, and their projects require them to come to a public meeting and then talk with elected officials afterward. So if we have time, we'll answer their questions. But I just want to applaud this family because I have been to several American Heritage Girls events, other events. I see them at church all the time. So thank you for what you do for your kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Is that Alexandra Harden? Oh, my goodness. We know you very well, and welcome to your kiddos as well. It's always really nice to see young people here. And if you have any questions for us or anything you want to talk about, we'll be here in between meetings if you want to have a conversation. I just wanted to, again, recognize all of the incredible work of those that are helping with traffic, infrastructure, public safety, and community services. We couldn't do it without all of the partnership represented in this room, so thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to other business. Any other business for us today? No? And then anything from the county manager?
No, just the report is in your packet. It's 30 pages. Just most of it you should already know about, so happy to answer any questions.
Doug does a great county manager report, and yes, it is in the packet and very thorough, and always pretty fun to read all the great things that are happening. So with that, the next business meeting will be held on Tuesday, June 25th, 2024, at 1:30 PM. We are adjourned. Thank you.